Okay, uh, thank you everybody for coming this evening. Uh, my name is Chris Thornley. I'm the Chair of the Board of Health Monroe. Um, it is Wednesday, September the ninth, uh, two thousand twenty approximately, uh, uh, six oh three P M. We are calling our meeting to, uh, uh, to, to start. Um. Uh, thank you all for joining us tonight, uh, virtually. This is something brand new, so when I screw something up, please, uh, bear with me as best as I can. Um, the first order that we will, uh, uh, address is public participation, which at this point, it doesn't look like there's anybody else on. Um. Uh, so we will move right to the, the second item, uh, which is the approval of the minutes, uh, from the previous meeting, which was all the way back in March, uh, March eleventh. Um, I'm assuming, uh, most of you, if not all of you, has, have read it. Um. So, uh, with that, I will, uh, motion to approve the minutes as they were printed.
Mary Porter motion for second.
Thank you. Um, and, uh, motion, uh, about Chris Davis. Hi, uh, Michael.
Hi.
Uh, Nancy.
Hi.
All right, and so that carries unanimously. Um, okay, so we're moving right along to, uh, Agenda Letter D, and that will be the, uh, Health Activity Report, as I turn the meeting over to Nancy. Uh, go ahead and hit it, Nance.
All right, um. Pull out the sheet here. All right, uh, so we have two reports, one from last year. And I call your attention to the seven one nineteen to six thirty two thousand twenty Environmental Health Services Activity Report. Um. What I would like to point out is you'll see that routine food service inspections, or even temporary food farmer's markets inspections are down, and you would expect that because of COVID. Um. Let's see, we've done a lot of septic work. You move down the page, Items twenty to twenty-eight, you'll see that we've got one sixty-seven, seventy-one percent, even still. And we're, we're busy now with a lot of septic work as well.
Can I ask on lines eleven and twelve, were there complaints? What type of complaints were coming in this period?
Uh, eleven is basically, uh, no, they weren't complaints, um, these were, uh, home inspection, daycare review.
It says that there were thirty-three actual.
Um. We're looking at li- uh, line eleven D.
Eleven A, well, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, looking over at the year-to-date, it has complaints listed. So I'm just asking, like, what kind of complaints were people bringing in?
Oh, the kinds of complaints that come in, um, let me think here, um.
How are they addressed, I guess?
Yeah, a lot of the complaints that we're get, what we're getting in right now are, um, like COVID complaints for restaurants. People sitting too close to each other, food workers not wearing masks, those are the kinds of complaints that we're getting in. Uh, we've gotten others where somebody's septic system was failing, we're ordering correction. It's a sta- it's those types of complaints. We have received no complaints regarding of, uh, 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 lead poisoning. Which, you know, I'm just noticing, I'm looking here at eleven D, um, that was like a daycare review or a home inspection daycare review. That's just a refile review.
Okay.
Nothing out of the ordinary for different types of complaints. Um. Yeah, nothing, other than, of course, anything related to COVID, we have a lot of those coming in.
You're saying a lot, but, well, unless they're in the, they must be in the next report that starts with the July month.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, with the, the numbers where it says at the top, number seven, new complaints, see how it's a hundred and thirty-two percent? We get a number of complaints right there that are, that have added in. Let me look at the next report here, um.
Looks like, uh, five.
Yeah, the next report says zero, well, for food service, pre-open, but then for complaint, there aren't a lot. There were three in July and two in August. So really, the higher ones were back on the other sheet. There was one that was pre-COVID, and then six or seven.
Just tell me where we are, 'cause I don't, I of course have the agenda, but which one is the?
On the Environmental Health Services Report. If you look down at the temporary food and farmer's market, and then under it, complaints.
Okay, thanks a lot.
There were actually, in October and December last year, there were a couple of complaints. Those were the highest. The more recent months with COVID are pretty low. Other than the seven, the seven that were initial inspections, but those were in May, but they were initial inspections.
Now, those, these are, just so that you know, the COVID inspections, they're not called out on this report as a separate necessarily food inspection. Those would fall under new complaints for thirty-three. Actual year-to-date. First, item number seven A.
Seven A?
We decided not to put them under regular food inspections, 'cause they're a little bit different. It's about social distancing and those types.
Yeah, I wasn't asking about COVID. I was asking about these food complaints that are, the year-to-date complaints were thirty-three, thirty-eight. Those, that was what I was asking about, was actual food complaints, not asking specifically about COVID.
Right, um.
I mean, are people calling in that the restaurants are dirty, or people calling in that they're concerned about?
No, I just wanna, I just wanna make certain, now, when you're saying food complaints, are you, wh- which number you want? I just wanna make certain I'm on the same page as you.
Number seven, eight, nine.
Okay, so new complaints.
Complaint, complaint, initial inspection, complaint, re-inspection.
Okay, okay, those are not necessarily food complaints.
So that's why I asked, what type of complaints are these? What are these?
Oh, yeah, they're, they're, um, it could be from, it could be a food complaint, but it's, um, and it could be a, uh, a social distancing type complaint under COVID, but I don't have that broken out for you. I don't have a list of types of complaints.
Okay.
I can get that information to you, though.
Well, I, I just wondered, because looking at the numbers, I mean, it's, when we're looking at the ones that end in June, they're pretty scattered. I mean, but in January, there were, or, excuse me, in December, there were six new complaints, and in November, and way back last August, there were complaints with initial inspections. So those had nothing to do with COVID.
That's right. In the winter, many times, uh, like in November or December, we'll get complaints, usually it's, they're related to heating complaints. And then in the spring, we usually get complaints regarding garbage or trash. It's pretty predictable. This got thrown off a little bit because of the COVID. That happened, of course, in February, and even after February, because we were, there was, the restaurants were closed.
Yeah, and March didn't really hit us quite yet. It was coming. Mid-March was the, the start.
Right.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Oh, I'm sorry for the confusion. It's hard, you know? We'll get it, okay. Um, so is there anything else on this report, uh, the environmental report that stands out to you? I can also kind of, um, kind of pull off those numbers tomorrow, if you'd like, on the different types of complaint, and I can just email it to everybody if you'd like me to do that. What do you think, Chris?
I'd, I'd like to see them.
Okay.
I mean, it's.
Is that okay, Chris?
Yo, absolutely. I apologize. I was just looking at the, I was just looking at the rest of the numbers on here. Um, there's not a whole lot that's super standing out for me. Um, with the obvious exception of the, uh, of what we expected as far as, you know, the routine service inspections of the food, uh, obviously dropping off in, you know, March, April, and May, June, um, type thing, you know, that, obviously, that's all to be expected. Um. So I, I would, I, I didn't see anything else on here that were, that was overly concerning to me. Uh, you know, I, I certainly, uh, you know, liked that we had, uh, you know, fifteen of our temporary licenses. Um, and the farmer's market, you know, put on between the farmer's market and other types of temporary food, uh, you know, licenses issued, at forty-seven for the year, fifteen of which were obviously in the month of, uh, June. So that was actually a very nice trend.
Yeah.
You know, that, that made me very happy. Um, would you happen to remember, and it's not that big of a deal if you don't, uh, but would you happen to remember if in fact, uh, many of these, or obviously some of them were, uh, uh, you know, for farmer's market, but were, uh, any of them more of that temporary, uh, itinerant, uh, food licensing that we had put together a few years ago, or a year ago, whatever it was?
Yeah, there, there weren't a lot, but what we've, um, what we've done, and another board talked about this, it was a really good idea, that we would offer the two-week itinerant vending.
Right.
And then if it worked out at places like Baratia's, if it worked out that they really wanna get a year's worth, they just came in and es- essentially paid what was remaining with, uh, for the license, and then we gave them a license for a year. So there were like maybe three, a few of those.
Okay.
No major sea change, but, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
But that was a good idea, really. It worked out well. So, um, so some of you, one of, one of the things that we saw is a lot of people are staying homes. If a lot of people are staying home, they're a lot, doing a lot of work at home. Um, but, you know, when we get to the revenue report, I just wanted to point out that we actually made, made the ex, our expectation for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Ken had asked me about, um, you know, how much less were we going to do? That was the discussion. Um, and I, I, I thought, well, maybe we'll do five percent less in the budget. But in actuality, our performance to projection was a hundred and five point eight percent.
Yeah.
Just pointing out, it was just one of those weird things.
Super awesome.
It was just weird.
Yep. Well, it, and again, uh, as I'm looking at the numbers, most of which seem like it's more of like that construction-type stuff, you know, the permits to construct and soil testing and, you know, things like that, that, uh, um, you know, we don't get a whole lot of. Um, but yet, because of the COVID, there was a lot of folks that weren't going away on vacation and things like that. So they were putting in pools and, uh, you know, deciding to put, you know, additions on, things like that, I'm sure, so.
That's exactly what happened, yeah.
Yeah, loo- looking at like, just forgetting the actual numbers, just looking at some of the percentages going down the line, I just thought it was, uh, I thought it was a great job.
Yeah.
And we were lucky to, uh, to have all that stuff go on as, as well as we did.
Now, our public pool licenses, there were some pools that didn't open, so that's, if you're looking on the revenue report, you'll notice on the bottom, you know?
Yep.
We didn't get all that we expected. So the numbers, you know, they really reflect what's happening in our world right now.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Um, is there anything else on the, uh, revenue reports that I have, that, that anyone has questions on?
No, they, they seem okay to me. If anybody else has any questions or anything, please, go ahead.
Let's go to Chris Davis.
Okay. Yeah, I know, well, you're the person I was thinking about as I was saying that, Chris. Okay, Nance, go ahead, move on then.
All right, good enough.
Okay, so all the reports are as they are, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, that's, those are the real numbers. Everything is, um, they're, they're tallied up. Um, actually, Barbara, she act, on the, on the report that we have here at the Health Department, she even marked down in September the money that she has, and I'm like, wow, we really should be only reporting on August, so I gotta keep her straight. Um, okay, so we have a number of grants. As you know, we have the, uh, Preventive Health and Health Services Block Grant. That grant is really reaching out to the community to do blood, uh, uh, pressure, uh, uh, trainings, and, uh, take clinics where we're actually taking blood pressures. So that grant, I don't know what the state wants to do. I think that everybody's kinda like, how are we gonna fulfill the requirements of this grant when it really is a one-on-one scenario? So we haven't done much on the grant. We submitted, um, for payment. Everything is fine. We're still on schedule with, um, with the money part, but the deliverable part, I don't think anybody's decided on what we're doing. And that's, and that's the, the nuts in the bolts. We thought that we might, you know, uh, we had a group of folks that were gonna take a class with us. They were all signed up, and we were thinking of doing a Zoom-type training. Um, and that's as far as we got with it. Does, does anybody have any other ideas on?
No, that was, um, as I was reviewing the minutes, that was certainly something, uh, that was in last, uh, last meeting's minutes, that we were gonna follow up on the blood pressure things and that sort of thing. So I kinda figured that all went to the wayside at this point.
It did, it did. Um, and that's not the only grant that's kinda gone to the wayside, where things have changed. The money's still coming, but how we're gonna do the deliverables is gonna be a bit challenging. Uh, our Emergency Preparedness Grant, uh, which ended in June two thousand twenty, um, is, all the deliverables are done. And now with the amount of time that we're spending on COVID, my time that's spent on, uh, on the activities of COVID, those expenses can be connected to the grant, so, um, a lot of that money was just sucked up from staff time in attending meetings and stuff. Anybody have any questions on that?
Nope.
Nope, keep on going.
The new grant, uh, July two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one is, uh, basically about to be submitted. I have to get that approved by the Town Council.
Meeting Monday, next Monday night, Nancy, is the meeting.
Yeah, no, it's not going in on Monday. My understanding is Ken doesn't have any of my stuff on the agenda, because the, the agenda is way too long. So that's okay, I think it might be the end of the month.
Yeah, there's another one, the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, on the twenty-eighth. So that's, you know, and, and we gotta see, and it might not even make that, that meeting, because I think the deliverables are due, I mean, the, uh, the submission is actually due next month. So the, you know, I have to wait and see when Ken's available, and, because we just got the paperwork for the grant, to be honest. Um, now, the health, the Health Enhancement Community Initiative Grant, that was funding that we were going to get through Stradford. Stradford is administering the grant through the State Health Department. What that grant entailed was reaching out, uh, to workplaces to talk about food protection. Those that happen to have like lunchrooms and things like that. We're also gonna do, uh, a program for an education and outreach for breastfeeding for children. So that, a lot of that outreach has just gone by the boards again, so, but, but Stradford is, is working with us, and what, what we're doing is taking somewhere near five thousand dollars of that grant, and we're going to spend it at the, at our library, so that there will be a place, uh, so someone can go to the library and nurse their child if need be, while they're there with their other children. Making it a, you know, breast is best kind of initiative. And, and what's really interesting about this is all the other towns, Trumbull, Stradford, Bridgeport, all the librarians have gotten together and they're all on board to make this really a, a regional effort. So that's what we're, that's the, the process that we are, uh, we're taking with our partners to make that happen. Um, the other piece is we're working on, um, a, a, a policy with personnel for staff that might have to feed their child. Let's, doesn't necessarily apply to us, but there should be a policy that if somebody works for the town and has a child and they need to pump, there should be a place where they need, that they can pump, uh, and, and store the milk, and that's a whole nother piece, but we need the location first, and there needs to be a policy. So that we're working with Human Resources currently on that. We have a draft document already, ready to be signed. So, but at some point, I will, I'll forward that to the board. Um, just waiting for Human Resources to sign off on what they think it should read.
Okay.
I don't have really anything to present there, 'cause it's all kind of like in the discussion stage. Um, then another grant that's come down the pike, it's the E L C Funding Grant. That actually comes from the CDC, is managed by the State Health Department, and it's for contact tracing specifically. And so, uh, under this grant, grant, what we're, what we're planning to do is to hire a part-time nurse, um, and she'll work about twenty hours a week, um, under this grant, doing contact tracing, uh, interfacing with the Board of Ed nurses, reaching out to the community in different platforms to do education on, um, safety and protection. Probably going out to food service establishments and meeting with operators. So we have to develop that piece when she comes on board, and so that's, that's.
This is, and, excuse me, sorry, this is Mary Porter. So this is another nurse in addition to the current public health nurse?
Yeah, because what we have now is, we have Heather. She is an eight-hour-a-week nurse. And, um, and what I realize is on here, the state has given us other emergency funding, and it's not on here. So, let's add it, there is actually a, I, there's a sixth grant, and this sixth grant is just funding, it's a COVID-nineteen grant, where the state is paying Heather to work an additional ten hours a week for contact tracing.
Now, the new nurse position you're talking about, is that already posted with the town, or is it not proposed?
No, I'm, I have to, that is, um, the grant itself needs to be proposed, I mean, to be approved by the Town Council. That'll happen next board, not, next Town Council meeting. Yep.
Do you know if that is on the agenda, needed by any chance?
I know, I, I, I just, excuse me, I just met with Ken today to do the agenda for Monday, and, and none of the health stuff is on the agenda.
Okay.
No, it's for the end of the month.
Oh, the end of the month?
The end of the month.
All right.
The back meeting the month, July and August. Then you expect, it would be expected that that has to happen before the position would be posted?
Oh, well, as soon as, um, um, I, the job description, we're gonna use Heather's job description, and I talked to, uh, uh, Mike Brown, our, our Personnel, uh, guy, and he is, he's willing to run with it as soon as the Town Council's approved.
He's the Human Relations Director now, like Kathy's job.
Yes, yes. But he's like, Nancy, the, the Town Council has to approve the grant first. I'm like, okay.
And this would be a temporary position under the grant.
That's exactly right. Yep.
I know somebody who might be interested.
Yeah, no, I, we, we really want somebody who has a skill set that can do this. It's twenty hours a week. Um, and that, um, and it's really important that they interface with the Board of Ed, uh, with the nurses over there, so that it's seamless, our relationship with them. Because if there's any kids that, that come in contact with, or there might be somebody home that's positive, we have to know that, um, it's very, you know, it's one of those things, you don't wanna, uh, drop the ball on that.
And anyone with a kid in school, that's, sorry, this is Mike Carroll Hee, and anyone with a kid in school knows that we've already gotten that email.
Huh?
Mike Carroll Hee, I said, and anybody who has a child in school knows that we have already received one email that somebody has come up with COVID. I got something from Masick, uh, two days ago.
That's exactly right. And, um, you know, uh, Health Department is very much involved, Heather and I. It took a lot of work, a lot of time. Um, and, uh, all resources come to bear on addressing issues like this. So, yes, so the one funding, like I said, I apologize for that, is grant, there's a sixth grant. It has, um, already been approved by the Town Council. Um, and it is, um, it's just for COVID-related, uh, activities. And so we purchased Heather a, a computer and a webcam, and things that she needs to set up at home, so that she can really work from home, uh, to do her contact tracing. Because you have to, as part of contact tracing, people need to call you back. You don't know when you're gonna call back, so you can't have really office hours, and I'm gonna be here for two hours, and if I missed, I missed you, oh, well. So she needs to use her, uh, town phone as the, the official phone for the Health Department and really do her work from home, especially because of her limited hours.
And that's, that's a separate grant than this, uh, E L C grant, you're saying, right?
That's right. It's called a COVID-nineteen Health Reimbursement. It's really a direct reimbursement.
Okay, oh, it's not a, it's not a, a formalized number, it's just gonna be reimbursed based upon what we, we submit as a town to Connecticut Department of Health?
Well, they've actually given a dollar number for, um, for what Health Departments can draw on, on that grant.
Okay.
I, yeah. If you can hold a minute, I can go to the file cabinet and get it, or I can.
No, not, not necessary. I, I would just wonder kinda how it worked.
Yep, and basically, um, I put down ten hours for Heather every week. And that's the only expense, other than, um, basically to set up her workstation at home.
Okay.
So they gave that grant pretty much right away after the outbreak. They're like, oh, my God, you know, how are Health Departments don't have the resources, existing resources to address? So based on population, they basically doled out the money. They were doling out the money even before we could like account for what we needed. It was, they were very responsive. And it's like, wait a second, you know, like, what can we spend it on? Well, I don't know, here's the money. Well, no, we gotta know, you know? It was pretty nutty at first, but they finally got it under control, and they've given us, um, a cheat sheet on what we can use the money for.
Okay.
Um, so. So those are the grants. There is a lot there. Do you want me to add, formally add to the agenda that grant, by the way, COVID-nineteen Health Reimbursement?
Um, yeah, going forward, um, it would be nice just to have kind of an idea of where we're standing with it.
Okay. I'll have that, I'll have that on there. We're a little overwhelmed here in the department. It was just, just trying to, okay, we got this. Huh?
I can imagine.
It had, you know, it has, it has been crazy at some, at some point. Um. Is there any unfinished business? I don't recall any specifically. Chris, were you thinking of any?
Uh, no, I really, I don't really remember much, to be very honest with you. Um. The only thing that I could, that I actually thought about, um, and I'm sure it was all backburnered at this point, was still our tattoo stuff. Um.
That is already in the hands of Ken, and, uh, you know, we've done our homework. Now it's really up to Ken. Then there's a panel, a, a group that will re, that will review that ordinance, and then it will be forwarded on to the Town Council.
Okay, so has it gone through, uh, the town's attorney yet?
I don't think so.
Okay, so that, that's part of.
Everything is backed up. It's, uh.
And, and again, it's. And, and again, it's obviously, it's a, it's a back burner situation. Uh, but that was the only thing that I could think of, um, as far as going back.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions regarding things that are missing or information that we need to know?
Uh, I don't know why, but, uh, we just lost Mary Porter off the list, so, uh, I'm sure she'll try to log back in unless she's, has to leave for some reason. Uh, in any case, at this point, let's, uh, let's continue on. Um, uh, I know you've kind of already kind of moved right into, you know, talking about COVID with the, the money that we're, uh, allotted from the state. So why don't you just kind of continue on, uh, with, uh, you know, what our response has been and, uh, you know, how our tracking has been going and, and, uh, you know, different things like that.
Got it, okay. Um, so under new business, uh, uh, coronavirus, uh, response and emergency planning. There's a lot to it and I will, um, if anybody has any questions, just let me know because there's so much to it. Let me start with the newest thing, uh, from the Director of Health meeting today with the state. Uh, planning is underway for first responders to receive, uh, COVID-19, uh, vaccine. Vaccine, of course, as everyone knows, is not approved yet. However, planning and how that's going to be dispensed is. So that is, uh, that is being fast-tracked, so that's number one. Number two, we have about a, we, we've had about 150 cases of COVID-positive people from Monroe. Um, and I think we've had three deaths, if I'm correct. I think it was three.
It was five deaths, it was five.
It wasn't five, it was five. It's been a, it's been a while since, um, you know, there was-
Very sick.
Yeah. Um, and so we've had, it's been trending where we're having younger people get infected now. Um, which is, it is what it is. And I think a lot of that is because, um, kids are out with each other, holidays, uh, you know, there's all that that's happening. Um, so, so those are the numbers. Uh, part of our tracking here is that, um, the state health department has two different databases. One is known as CT Eds. All the positive cases or possible cases are entered into this database from reports that are reported through, through doctors' offices and lab, and, and laboratories. This is raw data that we're getting. That raw data, um, there might be duplicates in, in the, in the, in the, uh, the reporting. Um, so it's like I said, it's raw data, hasn't been cleaned up. Sometimes addresses are missing, sometimes you might have someone that doesn't live in our town, but another town, but the address has, isn't changed on that lab slip. So there are these, these fluctuations that are happening behind the scenes. So every day, actually Monday through Friday, the state health department sends out a report. And in that report, there's how many cases of COVID probable and confirmed. Those cases, just so you know, that's, that, that's taken right from that raw data report. That's constantly being cleaned. And so you might see a re, you might see something, well, we had 150 cases in, in town. Tomorrow we might get a report that says, well, we've actually hundred, we had 147. So you're going to have a natural ebb and flow of cases because of data cleanup. Um, so that's, that's, that's that database. Um, I download that information every week. I try to do cleanups for duplicates and match it towards our cases in a second database that I'll talk about in a minute so that I can have the, the best numbers that I can get. Um, so that our health department at least, we basically know who's sick the best that we can. Um, though, then, uh, what happens is the state health department, they take these numbers that are confirmed and they put them in a, um, another database. This other base is, it's a tracking database, it's called Contact. And Heather checks that database every day. And those that have identified as a contact, she will follow up to, to do her case, tracking investigation. And all of that is entered into that database. So, any question regarding that piece?
Now, this is Mary, and I'd just like to comment that there's a very specific process for that contact tracing. So I'm sure that Heather's going right along the, the protocols checklist and-
Yep.
You can follow through very easily and carefully once it's identified.
Right, and we had, um, uh, a case in town where this person doesn't live in town. We wouldn't have known about it unless this other health department had contacted us by telephone. So there's a lot of case, uh, investigation that happens behind the scenes that is just not database-driven per se. Um, so I just wanted to, to share that with you. So it's, it's kind of tricky. It's the, I think, it's, it's the best system we can have at the, at the moment. I think all of us have felt that, um, you know, we're building the plane as we're flying it, which isn't the best place to be. But unfortunately, that's where we are. Any other questions on that?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, um, so that's pretty much our response. So let me get into the M O U for the medical provider. That is a, his, uh, quote-unquote, contract has run out. And the town council will be signing off on that. That'll be another item for the town council's approval. And I believe it will be, again, that's at the end of the month. Okay, Enid?
Yep.
Okay. Um, then we have flu clinics.
Uh, just a question. Um, did, um, did O'Reilly say anything about wanting to bow out of doing that?
No, I actually called him-
Yep.
Act, and then said, listen, we would like you to sign up for two more years. He's totally supportive of it, no problem.
Okay, great.
Yeah, using the same contract. I think, did the board review that contract two years ago?
No.
Okay.
Not that I remember.
It's the same, it might have been a written agreement by Ken, uh, but there are no changes in the contract. Is the, is the board interested in seeing the contract?
Uh, I personally am not. Um, if any of the board members for any reason feel they would like to look at it for some reason, obviously, uh, that is no problem at all. Um, I don't see any reason for me to see it. Uh, I know there's a dollar amount attached to it, uh, which, uh, at least the first contract, uh, Dr. O'Reilly did not accept the money. Um, so I, I'm, I'm fine with whatever, you know, if anybody else wants to see it, obviously they're more than welcome to. But I don't, I don't see a, I don't see a need for it.
Yeah, it, it's volunteer.
Yes, volunteer is no-
All right, um, any other questions on that?
None. Not from Mary.
All right. Now we're moving on to flu clinics. Uh, we're having two. We normally have a flu clinic for town employees and volunteers here in Town Hall. Uh, we have, uh, we have a, uh, an agreement with Rite Aid. They're going to show up with their pharmacist and they're going to have the flu clinic in the town council chambers. And we're going to call groups in by department so that they're, so that we can be mindful of, uh, proper separating distances between people and all of that. Uh, the second, uh, the second flu clinic that we're going to have is on September 11th at the Senior Center. This is going to be our first drive-through clinic. Um, and we, we tested out our, uh, an appointment calendar on the town website so, so that individuals could sign up for, for an appointment. Um, there, and what we were planning on as part of the clinic that, um, you would have, um, customers that came to the Senior Center, they'd drive in, they're, they're, they're asked, you know, they, they were instructed to pre-fill out their lab, uh, report, their, their questionnaire for receiving the vaccine. And then, um, if they hadn't filled out a form, we have a lane where they will get help to fill out the form. If they needed, if their form was already filled out, they would be instructed to go around to the back of the building, drive around the building to the other side. And, uh, there'll be traffic control people all the way. And then basically they will be, uh, they will be, uh, queued up to, uh, to, where the pharmacist would provide the vaccine on the side of the building there. Um, they would stay in their cars and they would just receive their vaccine there. Um, and so we had planned that each car going through would take about five minutes. And hopefully that will work out. Uh, it's a two-hour clinic, but in, just in case others show up that might not have registered, we decided to extend it another hour in this, just in case. And, um, we have about 35, 37 people signed up, something like that. So we are going to have a, an evaluator on site, uh, to evaluate our process to see if there's a way we can make it better. Um, and we'll be having a hot wash after the event, just to get everybody's feedback from the volunteers. The CERT team will be there. There'll be probably eight to 10 members. And then we'll, the med, they'll, we'll have, uh, two nurses from the Medical Reserve Corps is going to help us. Um, that's pretty much-
What's the date they're doing it?
It's this Friday. Do you need a flu shot?
I get mine in mid-October. I don't like it to work off before April.
Yep. Where the flu is-
I personally, this is Mary, I personally think September is early, based on past data, but it's what it is.
Yep.
It's all set up. I know that there have been past years that there were increases in flu incidence in the schools-
Yep.
In March, in late February and March and early April. And it could be, it was kids who had gotten their vaccine for their back-to-school physicals in August. And then they last six months, so you hit February and it's still flu season and they get the flu. But that is what it is, just the way it rolls.
Yeah, so, you know, we had consulted the state health department on it and, you know, it's, it's a tough one. It's better if it's later in the season, uh, possibly, as long as you don't have cases soon in the season because you need to build up those antibodies in the interim, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So any other questions on that?
No, you, you said that you'd, uh, that you consulted, uh, the, the state on it. Um, I, I'm assuming they, they said that earlier is better due to, uh, you know, immunity help with COVID and so forth?
Yes, yes. It's a, it's, you know, uh, you know, other health departments are, I think Trumbull's is in a week or two after hours. I think Stratford comes next, uh, so, um, yep. What we'll be using, uh, like for instance, when Tru, Trumbull's clinic, when, I, it's next month. I think it's early next month, I'll be serving at that, at their event as the incident commander. Theirs is going to be a larger event, uh, as a drive-through. So we've actually set these flu clinics up as if it were, um, um, an emergency event. We have an, an incident commander and you have a safety officer and all of that. So all, it's not just a drive-through where, you know, what you're getting is just the person that's giving the shot. There's a whole structure behind it and roles that people play. And there's training on, uh, you know, um, social distancing, sanitizing, wearing masks, that whole thing that, um, besides telling customers to stay in their car. It's, it's a very comprehensive clinic. And though ours is very small in scale, I'm, I'm really looking forward to next year, building this out certainly. And, and we may have to give, uh, vaccine, uh, COVID vaccine, how are we going to do that? Um, especially if we're, if, if the state decides that, let's say we get 50 doses. Well, you can't invite the public for 50 doses. What you would need to do is, um, you know, it would be your first responders. And how do you set up a clinic for them? So, you know, all of this is really practice for, certainly for, for more to come. My, what do you think, Mary, on that?
No, I, I think it's great that, especially for those who are less mobile and they don't have to get out of their vehicle and back in again. I think it's going to be a blessing. I think one good thing, and it may be the only good thing that's going to come out of this COVID virus, is people are going to get used to some of these things like drive-by, staying in the car, having telemedicine visits. And all of those things I think are going to be a benefit of this because it helps with efficiency a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that this is a good kind of dry run for the efficiency of if the COVID vaccine becomes available. So I think it's great, Nancy. Nice work for all those who coordinated it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's challenging. It, it really is. Um, there are, there are certainly going to be times when we have to make decisions on first responders and such. And, you know, I'll be reaching out to the board for ideas because, um, you know, there, it's all over the map right now. And, um, I would say that an exercise like this really gets us prepared because we know which volunteers we can count on, which ones that show up. Uh, for the M R C, when the, when the word went out that we needed M R C volunteers, I really wanted four nurses, but we were only able to get two. I'm not pointing fingers, but I'm saying that that needs to be part of the planning is that you might not get as many volunteers as you need. Just is. So, um, so what we, we, our backup plan is that, uh, um, the questionnaire that, uh, customers need to fill out, and I, everybody's familiar with them. The questions are pretty basic and you can, you can highlight those questions and make certain that a CERT member is trained on looking at the form and going through the form to make certain that the questions are answered. And that way, uh, you can really use like maybe one nurse and two CERT members. So it's that, those types of details that we, we're trying to, to cover, you know, to cover all our bases because things are going to get, or change in, in, in the future. They just are. That it?
Yeah, I like it. Uh, I, I, you know, I certainly agree with Mary that this is, uh, you know, it's a good thing. It, you know, you're, you're going kind of slow, uh, on this and, you know, hopefully, uh, you know, learn some things. And that way you apply it to a larger scale if in fact you ever come to that. Um, you know, either with a, with a COVID vaccine, you know, or, uh, you know, God forbid, the mass dispensing type situations and things like that, that you guys have drilled on several times in the past. So, um, yeah, I definitely think it's, it's, it's a good thing.
And the other thing too is from this event, you know, I asked some other people from the public to drop by and I'd like an assessment from more than just an evaluator from public health. Um, Mary, why don't you drop by on September 11th and take a look and give us some sort of an evaluation? Do you think you could do that?
I'm working eight to four thirty, but other than that, I-
I'm just, you know, if, if there's anybody on the board that wants to do that, that would be great. Um, and that, that, they don't have to stay there all that time. Uh, but just to get an outside perspective as a customer, what does it, what does it look like? What are we missing there?
Well, you know, I don't know. I don't know if any of you have had any experience with or exposure to the drive-through COVID testings that have been set up. Um, I don't know if you all know that my husband was diagnosed with a very serious illness in May and passed away in July. Um-
Sorry to hear that.
In the process of that, he had seven COVID tests because anytime you're going for a procedure or any kind of in-hospital testing, you have to go for testing. And when he was first feeling ill, he went for one at the, the CBS drive-through in New Haven. And the other ones were all at the St. Vincent's drive-through. But they are set up very efficiently and they're set up to very carefully protect, you know, obviously they're doing COVID testing, so they're being very careful about contact. They are stay-in-the-car testing. Um, it works. You know, it, it's set up so that it works. And quite frankly, Nancy, I'm not sure who exactly is like the overseer. I don't know if that's you or someone else for this Friday, but- But if you went and, you know, if you identified yourself to let them know why and you asked if you could go to the, one of those drive-throughs and look, for instance, the one with St. Vincent's is near Auto Zone on Main Street, just north of the hospital, where there's a medical building and Auto Zone. And cars pull in from the side street, line up, register there, go in, and it's done quite efficiently. And I'm sure that it'll be the same when it's not the Senior Center, but if you wanted to kind of see, oversee their process, I would imagine that they wouldn't mind if you came and just watched what they do.
Maybe I'm wrong.
It does work quite well.
Yep.
And I had a knee replacement in June and, and I was at Milford uh Hospital. It's, it's a Milford campus of Bridgeport Hospital, so I had to go down.
Milford Campus of Yale.
Yeah, so, well, it's not, if, if you say it's Yale, I'm su- I'm sure you know more than I do. I know that, well, yes, Yale New Haven took all those stuff over. Anyway, I went down to the side of Bridgeport Hospital on a Saturday. It had to be a Saturday because Monday was the operation. And they had the results back to me in five hours, but that's just because it was Milford Hospital, wasn't because of me, you know? And it was very efficient. Uh, they, they had um protection in case it was raining for them and they come, you don't get out of your car ever, so, you know, it works.
You know, we were making, a- actually part of the plan was that there might be some seniors that might have to be bused in because they don't have transportation. And we had made all these plans that if they needed to get off the bus, how that was gonna work. And in the end, nobody needed transportation, which made it easier for us. But it would have been nice to practice that piece because in a real event, not that this is not a real event, but I'm saying if you had mass vaccination, you're gonna have people that, people with walkers, you're gonna have people with all sorts of abilities and disabilities, and you have to figure out how you're gonna handle everybody. And so I wanted to, I wanted to be challenged a little bit more, but that's okay.
This is a side note, this is Mary, but the first time that I gave a drive-by vaccine was in New Orleans fifteen years ago. And I was um volunteering with Health and Human Services for a couple of weeks after the hurricanes. And we had some, basically we had a clinic set up so that people could get their prescription meds that they were now, had now run out of and the pharmacies were all closed and the doctors' offices weren't open. And we had a couple of people that were just not as mobile. So we went to them and interviewed them at their car window and gave flu vaccines and kept them shut. And it truly showed service to the people, you know, in a public health effort. And I think that that's exactly what you're doing. So I think that's a great thing.
Thank you, thank you. We'll be giving, I'll be giving you feedback after the event, because we're gonna have a hot wash and there'll be an after-action report. And, you know, basically to tell you the good and the bad things and things that we need to change, what I suggest, and basically to get feedback. Um, so, that's pretty much it.
Okay. So it loo- it looks like we finished the agenda.
Yeah, we kind of breezed right through a lot of this stuff. I thought uh, I thought we would be on some of the COVID things a little bit longer, but uh, you know, now that things have kind of changed a little bit more than, I mean, because I wanted to do something way back in August kind of thing. Um, obviously so much has changed since then. It seems like uh, seems like everything is kind of, you know, everybody seems more up to date on things and that sort of thing, so. Um.
Hey Chris, why did you call a meeting to order? My uh, my listening device wasn't working well.
Six oh three.
I have six oh four.
Six oh three.
Six oh three, okay. Well, I, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I hit the, the record button as they told me to hit. Um, so there's a, I, I, I don't know if you'll be able to, I, I would assume there would be some kind of transcript that you can access for this, Nancy, to put minutes together rather than sitting there trying to take notes on it. Um, I don't, I don't know how, I don't know how all that works, so.
Yep. But you know, Chris, there wasn't a lot of notes. We didn't need to vote on anything other than when we adjourned.
Yeah.
No, we actually, we, we voted on the minutes. I'm sorry.
We had to vote on the minutes and, and that was pretty much it. Um, do, does anybody have anything that they would like to discuss at this point? Anything else that uh, um, anybody has any questions about anything that we've talked about or uh just anything in general?
Just off the recor- off the record, I just want to say uh sorry to Mary and uh the loss of her husband.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, a- absolutely, Mary. You know, all, I'm, I'm sure all of us kind of feel the same way that, uh, you know, we're all uh, you know, deeply sorrowed to hear uh the passing of Bell, you know, that uh, that, I, I couldn't even imagine at this point.
Yep, yeah, I-
He's a pretty good guy.
Yeah. Yeah, I might have heard that once or twice about, no?
And just, it is so, so important that people are still getting, seeking out and receiving the healthcare they need and aren't afraid to go to doctors and hospitals during this time. So, services are there. You just have to get them if you need them. Anyway.
Um, I actually, I have a, a question for Matt. Um, it, have, have you-
I'm, I'm gonna hang up. I'll be at the next meeting. Thank you. It's very informative.
All right. Thank you very much, Enid. Have a good evening.
None.
Bye.
Um, Matt, if you're still there, oh, I see you clicked on.
Yeah, I'm here. What's up?
Have you um met any kind of resistance, any kind of uh, uh, help uh from uh, from business owners, restaurant owners, uh, that sort of thing? Uh, doing like your re-inspections uh for reopening after COVID and obviously making sure that they're meeting, you know, the new standards, whether it's an indoor dining situation or an outdoor or what have you. Um, any suggestions or feedback that you've received from business owners or business managers? Or like I said, any kind of negative uh, you know, connotations as well?
No, I mean, they've all been very responsive. Um, we initially went out and um provided the reopening guidance to all of the restaurant owners um and, and different establishment owners. And, you know, we had some questions here or there. We had a couple of concerns regarding um spacing and um, as you probably know, that we, we did a lot of the exterior dining areas, so there were a lot of questions that were raised as to how to properly um set those areas up. Uh, which a, a good amount of our restaurants did actually do that, but um, I, I didn't really encounter much resistance from the uh, the owners or the managers. Um, basically, we were just trying to help them in any way that we could um to help them, you know, to help their businesses stay open during that, during this time.
Cool. Thank you. Um, anybody else have any questions about anything? Um, anything we've talked about or anything else going forward?
No, not at this time.
I'm set. This is Mary.
Okay. Um, then I, I will certainly say thank you very much for uh everybody attending this evening. Um, I will, at this point, um, a motion for adjournment, uh, we'll say at officially seven oh one.
I'll second.
Excellent. Uh, Chris Davis?
In favor.
Uh, Michael?
Yes, I.
Uh, uh, Mary Porter?
I'm set, yep.
And Nancy?
Yep.
Thank you very much, everybody. You have a wonderful evening and everybody please stay safe. Um, and uh, hopefully, uh, you know, we can-
Keep an eye on your kid.
Yeah.
Hey Chris?
Yes, ma'am.
Who was second for that, for adjournment? Was it me or who?
Mike Hurley.
It was Mike. It was Mike.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good evening.
Everybody. Good night.